We will adjourn. Our short of business. Report on action taken in our close session.
The Board did need a closed session to confirm its real property negotiator. Uh, no action was taken with regard to the Seccon parcels or the Kim McDonald parceling, and the Board did authorize an increase offer with regard to the silver by dent trust parcel. The Board also meant a closed session to confirm its legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation and no action was taken.
I need a motion on agenda approval.
So moved.
The move has been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye's have it. Public comment on matters not on the agenda? I have, I have nothing to add. Nobody wants to talk to us, I guess.
Consent agenda. So I think we're going to dig up the consent agenda as a consideration of resolution fifteen dash ten dash oh five five regarding the acquisition of real property rights from rightful property owners effective on the Southport early implementation right.
That's the Seccon thing. We're not going to take that up.
That's a, that's clear. There's a, a change in the number five, right?
That's right. So, just to be clear.
Yeah. What were number four?
The resolution is amended to only include Seccon Financial and Construction Services, and it will exclude Crown Castle.
There's also a second item on the consent agenda.
Which is the contract for.
Contract.
I would move for approval of the consent agenda as devised.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and, uh, seconded that, uh, approved consent agenda as devised. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Public hearing. Public hearing in consideration of resolution fifteen dash ten dash oh four authorizing the end domain action for our real property Sacramento River Southport EIP project. Yonka County such as parcels zero four five dash two three oh dash oh five oh dash zero zero zero.
I think that's. Bill, that should read, uh, zero four six. Two three zero. Zero five zero, zero zero zero.
Yes. President Denton, members of the Board, I'm here again to present to you a res- uh, a resolution of necessity for the Southport, um, EIP project for your consideration. Uh, before I get started, I want to be clear about where the real estate team is moving right now. So we're trying to stay on target to make sure that we can, um, we have the necessary rights to go to levy construction next summer. Um, so our emphasis right now is on the, um, segment B, um, especially where we have folks who are in, um, in homes that might need, that are going to need to move before we can actually get, um, continue with our, with our work. So, the emphasis for these resolution necessity is going to continue to be looking at those properties. We're going to continue to negotiate in, uh, in good faith, but be prepared that that's what, uh, is coming forward in, in November. Alright. In this presentation this morning, I'm also going to, I'm going to discuss the goals of the Southport project. I'm going to provide a brief overview on the decisions made to advance the project to its current design, um, and then I'm going to present the information necessary for, required for resolution necessity. As you know, first and foremost, the Southport EIP project is a public safety project. West Safka's overarching goal is to promote, is to provide two hundred year flood protection through the entire city and its residents at the, with the least amount of harm to private property. Um, our goal is also to design and construct, um, a project to achieve two hundred year flood protection that maximizes the use of local resources. So as you know, this, um, project identification report was completed in two thousand eight, which identified a number of deficiencies in, uh, in the Westlip system. The alternatives analysis completed, um, the following year identif- um, did some analysis of the known deficiencies and proposed some solutions to said deficiencies. Through that process, Southport was selected in two thousand and ten to address significant levy deficiencies along the river. And in two thousand and eleven, a preliminary design report was completed, which analyzed deficiencies and solutions to address those deficiencies. Since the final preliminary design report, the levy design has been advanced from fifteen percent to sixty-five percent and now to ninety percent complete. Village Parkway design is a hundred percent complete, and if you've been down to Southport, you know that construction fencing is, um, is up right now, um, and then they've started grubbing and, and clearing trees. The project team anticipates that the levy design will be completed this calendar year and out to bid in early twenty sixteen. Just prior to the preliminary design report, staff presented a, a design decision hierarchy to the West Safka Board to help deliberate on solutions to address the best known, um, to, to address the known deficiencies. So we've gone through the whole process of identifying deficiencies, solutions, um, and now we're going through the process of how we actually came to this design. You may recall. We had, uh, a number of combined measure alternatives, the first of which included an adjacent levy with berms and an adjacent levy with a cutoff wall. The second design alternative had similar characteristics, but also included a setback levy with berms and included a partial levy degrade. And in the third combined measure alternative, include fix and place remedies at the tails of the project, uh, fix and place levy with cutoff walls, um, and fix and place berms. At that time, the West Safka team presented two guiding principles to selecting preferred design alternative. Develop a project that provides the greatest amount of protection to the city as soon as possible and max- minimize the effects on the community while still achieving the first objective. The combined measures of adjacent levy with seepage berms, setback levy with seepage berms, and fix and place with seepage berm designs were assembled to produce two design alternatives. Both design alternatives were advanced to fifteen percent. At the board meeting in January twenty thirteen, the project team presented these two design alternatives, included various solutions to address the ver- the known levy deficiencies. Alternative one included fix and place repairs with a conventional cutoff wall in segment A and B in the southern end of the project, combined with setback levy in the beginning of segment B through and behind B's lake and adjacent to the levy with seepage berm through segment F with an adjacent levy and cutoff wall in segment G. Alternative two consisted of the same solutions for segments A, C, D, and E, but segments B and F, um, solutions set back the levy. At that meeting in May, you approved, um, segments A, C, D, E, and G, but also requested that further evaluation be done on segments B and F. Value engineering studies were completed for segments F and B, um, between May and August of two, uh, uh, two thousand and twelve. Based on the feasibility of the measures evaluated, the impacts to private property and the cost effectiveness. Sorry about that. Um, and the cost effectiveness, ability to maximize flood protection for Southport, the West Safka Board approved and directed the project team to integrate the preferred design alternative into the project for segments B and F. There are four findings that need to be made for, uh, resolution of necessity. First of all, we need to show that, uh, the public interest and necessity for the proposed project, that the project is planned and located in a manner that's most compatible with the greatest public good and the least part, private injury, that the private, that the project is, the property is necessary for the project, and that the offer has been made to the owner of record. So first of all, the public interest for the proposed project. This is a five point six mile improvement project that includes, um, a number of solutions to deal with known deficiencies in Southport from the, uh, from the barge canal, well, to south of the barge canal, all the way to the city's southern limits. This design, it will provide two hundred year flood protection, meeting state and federal standards. It protects over fifty thousand people and over fill, four billion dollars in community assets. Without the project improvements, residents and, um, businesses are continued to be exist during a major flood event or storm event. The second finding is that the proposed project is planned in a, located in a manner that will, uh, be most compatible with the greatest amount of public good and the least amount of pro- private injury. Property that we're speaking about is in segment B. This, as we've already talked about, this is on the west bank of the, uh, of the Sacramento River, where there are known deficiencies of seepage, underseepage, stopes, slope stability and geometry issues. These deficiencies were evaluated by the team and brought forward into a number of alternatives and presented for your consideration, and ultimately, the design and, um, decision making was deliberative, included public safety, the engineering requirements, and, uh, dealt with the constraints. What are the project borrow needs, the habitat mitigation requirements, and the impacts to private property before a decision was made. Property that we're speaking about, the Colbreath and Ainsley parcel is approximately four point seven three acres in size, located in segment B, as I stated earlier. Um, this is where the levy transitions from being a strengthened in place to a setback levy. One point six three acres of the parcel is necessary for the levy improvements, including the levy, uh, operations and management corridor, as well as a small area for the offset. Another, uh, point one eight acres is necessary for a private road easement, which will provide property access, um, or access to the property from the Village Parkway improvements that are currently, or that are currently being planned to, uh, for construction. And then a, uh, just under a quarter acre of a temporary construction easement is the, is necessary for the building of the road. We also need to demonstrate that the offer has been made to the owner of record. Uh, the West Safka Board approved just compensation offer at the March two thousand and fifteen meeting. Uh, an offer package was assembled and sent to Mr. Colbreath and Ms. Ainsley for their consideration, um, following that approval by the Board. Uh, there has been ongoing conversations between BRI and the property owner to try to negotiate this property, and Mr. Colbreath and Ms. Ainsley have now hired legal representation, and some of those negotiations are happening between our attorney and their attorney. Um, they were given a notice about today's hearing. They have not responded to that notice and do not plan in attending or respond to, uh, today's hearing, today's resolution. That concludes my presentation.
Without a being the public comment. No public comment. Close to the agenda.
Close to hearing.
Close public hearing. Close public, uh, hearing and, uh, the motion on res- uh, resolution, uh, fifteen dash oh four, oh ten, fifteen dash ten oh four.
I would make the motion to approve, uh, resolution fifteen dash ten oh four.
Second.
The move has been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Regular agenda. Item number seven, consideration of potential short-term loan lines of credit to West Sacramento Area flood control agents to support cash flow and the Southport budget for this project.
Morning, President Denton, members of the Board. Um, I'll be brief. I think the general report itself outlined the, the issues that are before you for this item, but as you know, we've started construction of the Southport project with the initiation of the, um, interim Village Parkway South construction, and we're planning for construction, uh, next summer of the levy improvements themselves. Um, this project is by far the largest levy improvement project that the Board has undertaken thus far, uh, by several times over, uh, what the combined project costs are that we've done to date. So, um, there will be a number of very large expenditures, both during construction and in advance of construction, um, that have staff, um, really analyzing, um, on a monthly basis, uh, the cash position of the agency relative to the expenses, uh, that we're going to incur in the project. And I'll just outline just a few of those expenses, such as real estate, uh, in advance of construction. Um, as the Board knows, we're, we're going through an extensive, uh, property acquisition process, and those costs, um, are on the order of about thirty million dollars, um, both in land value as well as, uh, the cost to acquire that land. And those costs are being advanced by the agency, uh, in advance of reimbursement by the Department of Water Resources, our, our, uh, funding partner. And there's a very, uh, complicated process, unfortunately, with real estate, with DWR, and, uh, their reimbursement process comes in phases. Fifty percent, uh, is reimbursed upon certain milestones, and then an additional twenty percent of their cost reimbursed at another milestone and so forth, until we get to ninety percent of their, um, their cost reimbursed. Of course, that was all the ten percent in retention. And so as we project, uh, over the course of, uh, the next several months, next several quarters, uh, the agency's cash position, uh, the planned expenditures, the pla- planned revenue, um, from the state, both in terms of reimbursement and cash advance, um, we do notice that there are times at which, uh, we could be in a negative cash position. Now, wanted to be very clear that between current cash balance and the local cost share, the state cost share, there is sufficient funds to cover the entire cost of the project. There are these, uh, times when expenditures could overlap, whether it be construction costs and other program costs, where we end up in these temporary, um, unfavorable cash positions. So, um, we think it, uh, wise, uh, for staff at this point to consider looking at short-term lines of credit, to do a little research on what would be available to, uh, the Board, um, and then to come back at a later date, uh, with the findings of that, um, information gathering and some recommendations on, uh, both term and or amount of some short-term lines of credit that would get us through these, uh, short periods, maybe only one month at a time of, of unfavorable cash positions. Um, so anyway, that's the purpose of this report, is to seek approval from the Board to, uh, look into some of these, um, available lines of credit, and then to come back and report back on our findings. So with that, I'd open up the Board for any questions they may have.
Hey Greg, um, where do we get this line of credit if we need it?
Local banks.
Just a local bank?
Yeah.
Um, I think it's prudent to look, see, so we got the, uh, resource if, if needed, but looking at the, the cash flow model, showing what our sources of income, we list the in-loof fee and the measure V fees, but we have no income shown on, on either one of those two categories. I think we anticipate to be able to receive some funds in those categories, don't we?
Yeah, it's uncertain on the in-loof fee, and there's not that much funds available in that funding source at this time anyways, but on the measure V, uh, the City Council has agreed to up to ten million dollars of funding to the Southport project, um, uh, from the measure V fund. Um, however, the measure V itself is, is, um, scheduled to fund both streetcar and flood, and the timing of the streetcar right now is, uh, sometime out, as far as when those funds would be needed, and so the city has not gone, uh, and bonded against the measure V fund as of yet. It's planned to occur sometime next year, and so until that hap- so that, that's why it doesn't occur in the, in the cash flow analysis that, that you see here, is because the, the timing is not such that it would, uh, show up here yet.
Okay. Well, if, if, if we do get into a position where we are borrowing, uh, short, you know, monies to, to fill our cash flow needs, uh, I think we will need to, uh, remind the city that, uh, you know, measure V was promoted to voters as, you know, for flood protection, and it would be timely that we start to implement that.
Agreed.
Well. And I think you're absolutely correct. Um, I just don't know how you separate out monies that are bonded for flood protection and what's going to happen then to the streetcar dollars. I just don't know. And so, uh, somehow or another, staff's going to have to sit down and say, okay, how much can we bond? And we, how much can we use for flood protection and levy improvements, so that it does not infringe on the monies that are necessary for streetcar, providing Sacramento gets their act together, and, I mean, there's a whole lot of issues. So, um, but, I mean, I just don't want to be caught in the, in the short run of not having adequate, uh, funds for measure V, because I'm not in a big hurry to go out and get a line of credit from, uh, a local bank or whatever it is. That's going to be costly. That's going to add to the cost of flood protection, um, because the banks want their money. So, i- it's, I mean, I think that there's a delicate balance there, but I certainly think we ought to have that conversation.
Do we have any, um, pressure at all that we're going to buy the, uh, state dollars that come up besides their, their, uh, what they put off themselves? Can we get money from the state, uh, if we get it in a hole? If we're going to borrow money.
Well.
Can we get the state to come in?
Can they loan it?
So we have, we, we talk to the state quite frequently, um, several times a week, um, specifically about our cost share agreement, um, program funds, the necessity for those funds, um, the cost of this project, the fact that we're advancing, uh, real estate acquisition in advance of construction, which is a very heavy lift for an agency, especially one the size of, of West Safka. They are understanding and they are committed to, uh, moving as quickly as they can, um, to provide cash advance, true-up reimbursement. Um, and so they are sympathetic. They do know this is a big lift for us, and we do anticipate them working with us. As far as them loaning money, I don't see that as an option. Um, so this would be, what we're proposing today anyways, would be something that we would have lined up and to transact only if necessary. And again, we'll bring some of the conditions of how that might transact at the, when we would be ready to make some recommendations on how we think we should proceed, and that may include, um, short-term gaps that could be, uh, backstopped by the general fund, for example, if the city's willing to do that. It could be some, rather than waiting for the bonding of measure V, maybe some pay-as-you-go measure V for what may be available, uh, on hand to help, uh, bridge those gaps. So we're going to bring back a, a number of alternatives to consider that we would have, if you will, in our portfolio to, to handle these short-term, uh, these gaps.
There's number one thing in my mind is, and Bill, I'm sure that you disagree with this, but. Streetcar can come in and lay you smart land. That is the number one item, and that's what West Safka is for. The city makes a mistake, starts drawing money out of something that we shouldn't be doing, and that's their problem, and they got to correct it.
Well, I think that there's, under measure V, there will be adequate funds for both projects. And, uh. It's just a question of finding that delicate balance of how much and how soon monies for streetcar or monies for, uh, levy protection will be necessary. And so I, I think that that's the balance that staff is going to have to evaluate, and quite frankly, they're going to have to bring that issue to the council. The council's going to have to, um, uh, wrestle with it and see exactly where everything is. I agree with what you're saying, Bill, but at the same time, I think that a really good forum for that kind of conversation may be this retreat kind of thing that we have in February or January, whatever, whatever that is. I think that would be a very good time to have that conversation, because there are people on the council that are very, very, uh, pro-streetcar, much more than I am, but they're, you know, they, they're there, and, you know, it's, they helped measure V get passed. The, there's, there's some responsibility there to make sure that we share what, what we've got, and w- we'll have to make sure that, um, you know, everybody fully understands all the different issues that are there, and, you know, it'll be real interesting to see as this year progresses, what El Nino does as far as flood protection or anything else. It'll be very interesting to see, because right now, we're in a drought. Nobody really gives a damn about flood insurance, so you know, there are flood care or whatever it is, but I'm, keep telling the people, you've got to make sure you buy your flood insurance. You've got to make sure you're prepared, uh, because it's going to change. And so, uh, I, I, I think that we have to make sure we keep it at the forefront of each one, and, um, it certainly will be an interesting, uh, discussion to have, uh, from the council, deus.
Need a mo- need a motion?
Project updates.
Excuse me, Mr. President.
You're asking for direction from us to be able to allow?
Yeah, there's a recommended action on there, so we look for recommendations.
Then I would, I would make that motion to, uh, recommend for direct staff to explore the, uh, opportunities for, uh, short-term, uh, cash and cash flow bills.
I'll second that.
The move has been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Ready for project updates? I'll, I'll do it from here, since the microphone works here and not over there. Um, so just real brief, just wanted to touch on a couple of things. We'll do a much more detailed project update at the regular board meeting in November. But last week was the, um, California Flood Preparedness Week, and on Monday, we kicked off, as we've done for the last several years, um, the California Flood Preparedness Week activities in partnership with Department of Water Resources and the Army Corps of Engineers, um, and also in partnership with the Washington Unified School District. So this year's media kickoff event was held at Southport Elementary School, uh, last Monday, and, uh, the event went over very well. We unveiled our new, uh, computer educational tool for grades one through four, um, for being flood prepared, introduced some new characters this year. It was a big success and a, and a big hit. The mayor spoke, uh, was kind of the emcee for the, for the event, and it was, uh, well-received and, and, and very much appreciated by the school district and our, and our partners. So we'll give a much more in-depth, uh, So we'll give a much more in-depth overview of all of the activities that took place last week at the November meeting. The other item that I wanted to touch bases on, and you may have received notification, is the US Army Corps of Engineers Sacramento District, Cent Valley Flood Protection Board, and the Department of Water Resources are partnering on a general reevaluation of the Sacramento River flood protection, flood control project, and, which is focused on the levees and the flood protection system along the Sacramento River and its tributaries, which also includes the Sacramento Bypass and Yolo Bypass. So there are going to be some public meetings coming up on November 3rd and November 9th, public scoping meetings. The November 3rd one is going to be held here at City Hall from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m., and they'll introduce the purpose for the project, what they intend to do, the scope, be there to answer questions. Also, I think there's a comment period that's open through November 25th. I might be off on the date. But on the actual project, they've issued the notice of intent to do a draft DIS and a draft DIR combined document. So there may be opportunities for other non-federal partners to join in that study. And so we're going to be pursuing a seat at that table, if you will. We would like, at least I wanted to introduce that topic to the Board, that if the Corps and DWR make room at the table for other local partners, such as West Safka, that we would potentially bring an item back to the Board to ask for approval to join that So we can talk about more details if you have questions about what that might mean. There are some, there would be some financial contribution, as well as some in-kind service, and obviously our experience and our needs. But part of that study would touch on some of the levee system that's coincident with the city, the bypass levees, right alongside the deepwater ship channel and the northern part of the city as well. So, and of course, the Sacramento River levees as well. So it would be in our interest to participate in this study. If not officially at the table, then certainly we would be working with our partners to make sure that we comment and make our, share our information and request to the study team. So I just wanted to give you an update on what was getting started, and if there's an opportunity in the near future for us to participate or join that study, we want to come back to the Board to seek approval to do that. Remember, the third is the public scoping meeting, so I would encourage the Board to attend that.
I've got one question.
Sure.
He mentioned, you know, the Yolo Bypass levees, which protect us. Seems like we have an overlap there between RGRR and their, you know, what they're contemplating going forward with.
Yeah.
The last thing we want is any, not conflict, but, you know, anything that would affect RGRR, and it adds nothing to us getting involved, that just shows the importance of us finishing RGRR and getting it approved and authorized.
Correct. I couldn't agree more, and both the district staff and the state, who are our partners in RGRR, are well aware of those issues and agree completely with the point of view that you just raised, that...
And the common features is coming down the line, too.
Exactly. Because they're also affected by the Sacramento River flood control project, GRR.
But...
Share similar concerns.
On the other side, having the feds come in as a partner, looking at continuing improvement systems, good, I think, good.
Yes. And then one last update, Civil Works Review Board. So it has been scheduled for December 8th back in DC. I'll be attending, and I believe Chairman Ramos will attend. We're, staff is meeting with both the state and the district staff weekly at this point to develop our presentation in front of the Civil Works Review Board, and I'll report back monthly and/or as needed on our progress. But we have a, we have a firm date now, December 8th, and it is a combined Civil Works Review Board with both the common features and the West SAC GRR. And it's anticipated that the presentation will be combined on common elements. We will separate and do one's unique study elements at a time, one at a time, and then kind of a conclusion, again, wrapping up with comments from the state and the flood protection board on these two studies, and how they align with the goals in the Central Valley. So Congresswoman Matsui is scheduled to attend at least the kickoff of the Civil Works Review Board, and we're hearing that there may be other congressional representatives there as well. So as I know more, I'll report more.
I would say that the program that went with the kids, one through fourth grade, it went, from what I hear out on the street and everything, I did not attend, but from what I hear at the grocery store, or what I hear at the post office, or the phone calls that I've received, it went very, very well. The kids were just really charged up, and mayor, of course, did a good job. Mr. Denton, I think, was there, and so it really went, it went very well. It's a, it's a very good educational first step, and so I think it's, it's really, they did a good job.
Yeah, I think at the November board meeting, we'll provide a presentation that can highlight some of the news clips and some of the other audio visuals that took place, so you guys can get a sense of what was going on. It was a lot of fun.
Thank you. Anything else, reading adjourned.